Six o'clock, that way we have more time for questions. So, before we get started and we get into welcome, if I could ask Pastor Jay to lead us off with a prayer. Everybody would stand?
Our gracious fathers, we vow our heads tonight. God, we come before your throne, praising you for who you are, for how you bless our county. How you blessed us with so many wonderful people tonight. Father, we come to listen to candidates who are wanting to serve and to lead this community. We pray, God, that we would listen intently and would all be patient. And, Father, God, that we can make our minds as we follow your leadership in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
If you would remain standing, we'll say a pledge allegiance to the flag. You would salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Now we can be seated. Well, what a great crowd. This is fantastic. So, my name is Eric McDonald, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are just delighted to be able to have this event tonight. We're delighted to have you guys here. And, most importantly, and as I was telling these guys earlier, I'm delighted that there's five people that are interested in serving in our community, enough to go through the race that they're in. So, thank you, guys, for being willing, and thanks to your support teams that make it possible for you to sit up here while stuff at home is still going on. So, thank you, guys, for that. So, wanted to do a couple of things. So, the, just a general, the election, I believe, is March the nineteenth. So, certainly, everybody that is in District Three, don't forget that. You're spending a lot of time here tonight, so make sure you go and take advantage of that opportunity. If you do have a question as to what commission district that you're in, if you go to the Greater Harrelson Chamber Facebook page, we posted a page. You can call the county commission office, you can go up to the registrar, and you can look. But generally, it kind of seems to me to be kind of like Waco up through Buchanan, kind of the center section of the county. So, tonight's meeting is on Facebook Live. So, what I'm gonna do at this point is I'm going to take my phone out and I'm going to go, we're live?
Yep.
So, I'm gonna go to Facebook, I'm gonna go to the Greater Harrelson Chamber. This is where you would take your phones out and do the same thing. Chamber of Commerce, I'm gonna find this live video. Maybe? There it is. We're gonna find that live video, and I'm gonna share it on my personal page. So, I'm gonna do that now, but I am not technologically savvy. So, share now. So, now, all my friends have a chance to see this. So, for those folks at Facebook Live, or if you're watching this and you're watching it live, not recorded, it will live there afterwards, you can submit questions, Elizabeth, in the comments, if you would submit those questions, and then we'll take those and give those to our panel, to the audience. If you guys wanna submit questions, there's some four by six note cards over there, some pens, just grab those, write a question, raise your hand. Tara over here, who's also doing her Facebook, she'll run over and grab your question, and then we'll give it to our crack panel of judges right here. So, thanks to all the volunteers for coming tonight as well. So, go over a couple of the rules, just so we know that where we are, this is not a debate, it's a forum. So, there won't be rebuttals. This is, and everyone is certainly a professional, understands this, but there won't be an opportunity for, you know, anybody to rebut anything during the conversation. The candidates will be each given two minutes in order to have opening remarks. I've got our timekeeper in the front here, Ms. Lou. Ms. Lou is fierce, so we don't wanna make Ms. Lou mad. So, and that's why she brought her bodyguard, Jay. So, between Lou and Jay, but what she'll do is while it's green, man, run on. About halfway through, it'll turn yellow, and then when it turns red, we ask that you complete that sentence and then stop. So, after each of the questions, so after the two-minute opening remarks, there'll be the questions, and we have those over here. We'll start and we'll ask the questions. I'm gonna start with Max on the questions, but he'll get three minutes to answer that question, up to three minutes. So, if my time math is correct, that gives us, if everybody took the full three minutes, fifteen minutes per question. So, we're probably limited to five questions if we use the entire time. I don't know if we will or not, but that's kind of the way this thing, this thing ends at seven thirty. So, but again, we are certainly glad you were here, and so, without any further ado, we did a snowman hand-drawn drawing to see who's gonna start first. And Adam is gonna start with the opening remarks.
Most of you know my name's Adam Buddy. I guess the greatest thing I can tell you that I feel like I'm gonna fit in this District seat is I served the county here for twelve years as a fireman, and I served you well as a fireman. I didn't care who you were, what your last name was, what time it was, it didn't matter. If you had a need, I was there to meet it. Some of you in this room, I worked on a fire pit with you, and you can ask any fireman out there now that you might run into, they'll tell you the same thing. So, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud that I love Harrelson County, and I have for a long time, and I hope that you guys will find confidence in me to let me serve you through the district, or through the commissioner's office with the same admiration that I did as a fireman.
So, amazingly, it actually worked out to work this way. So, let's see, Mr. Shell is next. Yep. Yeah, James, no, I'm sorry, you're right. Jim, you're next. It worked perfectly this way, and it was random. Yeah, sorry, I was looking.
Well, I'm Jim Griffin, and I'm from Harrelson County, grew up here, and moved away and been around the state and other places, and now, now back home. My family's here. Married Deborah Robinson from Waco, where her dad was mayor for there forever and ever. And my family with her is here, and my mother is still here in the county. And so, we're vested, and all three of my children, although we never lived here when they were growing up, all three of my children lived here, and I got six grandparents. So, I am interested in what's going on in the county. I've moved back here so I can see my grandchildren grow up, and I'd kind of like to see them hang around and stay here. So, in order to do that, they gotta have a place to work, they've got to have entertainment, they've got to have a reason to stay in this county. And that's what I wanna be a part of, is making sure that we've got plenty of jobs, plenty of opportunity to make them wanna hang around and stay. And so, that's why I'm here, 'cause I'm tired of sitting on the side complaining about what happens here, there, and yonder, and so, now I'm looking forward to being a part of it. So, appreciate the opportunity and appreciate you serving on the fire department. Thank you.
Mr. Harden?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Adam, thanks for your service to the county. Most of you know me, I'm Seth Harden. If you don't know me, you probably have met my family throughout the years. I was raised by some great individuals. Dave and Hazel Harden, my grandparents, Kim and Gloria is my parents. I have been here my whole life. I love this community, I love what it does for me and for my family. That's the reason I'm here. I'm not coming today with a personal agenda that I'm gonna go to this board with and say, "This is what we gotta accomplish." It's about you, it's about the people of this community, how I wanna work together with the other board members and throughout this district to make this county better. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity, I'm grateful to be able to be at your service. I currently do a lot of service work here. I don't like to pat myself on the back for the things that I do, but I do serve this community, and I wanna continue to do that. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin? No. Mr. Shell? I rooted down, buddy.
One of the awesome things I've been told. My name is James Shell, for those of you that don't know me. I've been a resident of Harrelson County for over fifty years. I have two sons, one's a teacher to middle school of Harrelson County, the other one's a contractor. My vision for this county is unity. My goal for this county is to work with the other commissioners so that future generations, of which I have two grandsons, one graduating this year and one next year, does not have to move out of this county or this state to get a decent job. I tell them all the time, "Don't go get a job, please get a career, 'cause you'll hate going to a job every day. But a career, you'll wanna get up and go and do what you're gifted in." I look for continuation of serving this community. I've served Harrelson County through the funeral hall and thirteen years in the coroner's office of helping people. And the Lord has led me to continue that in a different path that is ultimately left up to him and to you and the voters of the third district. Thank you both, gentlemen, for what you've done in this county.
Mr. Witcher?
Thank you, sir. My name's Thomas Max Witcher. I go by Max, for those that don't know me professionally, I'm known as Thomas M. Witcher. I was born in Harrelson County on a farm, and my mother and daddy were Jack and Reba Witcher, still on the farm, by the way, which I love. Went to high school in the county, went to West Georgia College, came back, went to law school, came back, had my own business in Harrelson County for thirty-two years and have practiced for nearly forty. As these gentlemen said, Harrelson County's been good to me, I love Harrelson County. I was sitting at home the other night thinking about what all has been going on the last few months, and decided the Lord wanted me to run. I would like to help unify this board, and I'd like to move the county forward. We have a great opportunity in the future because our population from Atlanta is expanding out this way. We need industrial growth, we need more residences, we need to increase our tax base. We need to do a lot of things. I was thinking, you know, as a county, we are all one, or a community, we're all one. We're not about this district or that district, so we all need to unify and work together, and that's my goal. If y'all see fit, elect me as Commissioner of District Three. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Witcher, we're gonna start with you with our first question, and then each of you will get a chance to answer that. Remember, our remarks are only to three minutes, and we'll just start, go, Mr. Shell, Harden, we're just down the line. So, the question, the first question says, "As Commissioner, what steps would you take to bring industry into Harrelson County?"
We would have to work with the development authority and the water authority and the school in order to try to continue to improve our base, in order to provide the stuff that big industry won't, like, I mean, under lockdown at Buffalo Fission, we've gotta increase our source of water, even though the state studies say that we won't need any more water until 2050, I believe, I think it was the eternity study. We need to worry about our water source, we need to improve our schools. Our schools are doing a great job at the present time, but any industry that looks coming here is concerned with water, roads, school. The schools have increased their rates in the state on their scores, our literacy rate's down. Summer of 2016 or 15, don't remember, showed us that we do need to be concerned about a source of water. We have to improve our roads, which we'll have to look into whoever gets to the board, because I don't know, I know the state subsidizes our roads, and I know we put in a one percent splash fund a year ago, and in the first four months, we got over half a million dollars, which is divided between the cities and the county, and I know some roads are on the book to be paved. But we gotta provide roads, we gotta provide better schools. Even though they're doing a great job, we gotta do better in order to attract industry and other people to move here.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, the same question, and I'll just repeat it, says, "What steps would you take to bring industry into Harrelson County?"
Mr. Witcher, very well, very well. We're not gonna draw industry into this community. I'm not gonna call it a county, we're a community, we're a family. Until we get some infrastructure. I'm not the wisest man in the world. But I'm from San Mountain, Alabama, originally. I don't understand, we can't have a lake that Mr. Tom Murphy, back in the day, was gonna help us get. But why does other counties have reservoirs? Many of them are neighboring counties to the south. We have the resources to do that. I don't know if we have the means to do that financially. I think this county is pretty well-run on what them funds that you guys have got to run it with. As a taxpayer, yes, I'm tired of my taxes going up. But as a tax recipient, what am I getting for my tax dollar? I can't complain. I've worked with the sheriff's department, I've worked with the fire department. I know they're doing the best they can do with what they got to do with. How are we gonna solve three generations down the road, four or five, help those generations today? Exactly what Mr. Witcher said. We've gotta get some water, we've gotta get some roads. We're gonna get sewer systems improved to draw this industry in here. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Harden, the question was, "What steps would you take to bring industry into Harrelson County?"
Ladies and gentlemen, we may hear it all the way down the line. We hear what's gotta take, what is the infrastructure of this county. So, there is nothing that we're going to be able to do, we're not gonna be able to bring in these large corporations. Let me tell you something, Harrelson County don't want that. If we wanted that, we'd live in Douglasville or Carrollton right now, okay? What we want is we wanna have people move into our community. I've always said there's three things people look for when they move into a community. Number one's the school district. We've got the best schools around, okay? Harrelson County and Bremen. They look for a church, we've got great churches in this community. The other thing they look for is they look for a great, great department, okay? So, there's some things there that we can improve on to do better, to draw people to our community. And what happens when they move into the community? They start to pay taxes, okay? And so, they're gonna have a job outside of here, that's my firm belief. People don't mind commuting. Probably nine or ten months ago, I had a family that had moved in from Powder Springs. They wanted this small-town feel, they wanted the country, they wanted this community. They moved out from Powder Springs, where it's hustle-bustle all the time, to come here. Where's their tax dollars going to? Here in our community, okay? So, first of all, as I said, we've got to improve our infrastructure, and then we build from there. If I'm elected, that's one of the things I won't be able to do. I'm a very good negotiator, I'm a very good people person. I love making things happen, I like getting out. To me, no means nothing, it means next opportunity, okay? So, that's what I'm willing to do for District Three in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, the same question is, "What steps would you take to bring industry into Harrelson County?"
Well, first of all, I think industry is a no-brainer, that we have got to increase our industry base here. Everybody talks about taxes and wanting taxes reduced, nobody wants to give up services. So, the only alternative that we got is to increase our tax base and that's bringing in industry. Well, industry is having a difficult, I mean, we should be ideal right here in our location with I-20 and 27th, Four Lane North and South, and our location to Atlanta Airport, Atlanta, Birmingham. We should be ideal for that. We've got, I talked to a considerable employer since I've been doing this, and he said, "We got a problem." He said, "I hired ten people, four days later, one of them is still working." So, we've got a culture problem in our area. Yeah, we've got, we've got infrastructure that we gotta take care of. We can't be running out of water in the summer when we get a drought. We hadn't talked about internet. If you want industry to come, they usually gonna bring some employees with them, and you're not gonna get them to come in the community that can't even get internet. I live three and a half miles from Walmart, I can't get internet. Well, I got HughesNet, and if any of y'all got HughesNet, that is not sufficient, that is not gonna work. So, we gotta do something about that. I know I've whispers come, and I know we've made some efforts. I'm not sure if that's the answer to what our problem is. When you've got a family of three or four or five that get on the internet at one time, I'm not sure from what I understand, or I'm not convinced, that that's the answer to our internet problem. So, we got a lot more serious things to look at and take care of than just talking about internet. And one of those biggest things is our culture. So, we got to bring everybody in the community. I'm talking about business community, I'm talking about the school, everybody's got to come together, and we got to... And this Bremen versus Harrelson County, hey, listen, we gotta get over that. I hear that all the time, and I'm over it. I graduated from Harrelson County, my grandbabies go to Bremen, my son-in-law's graduated from Bremen. I'm beyond it, I come home and I'm thinking, "Man, that was forty, fifty years ago, and y'all are still back and forth between us." We've got to get over it. If our county's gonna be good for the future, then our culture has got to change from where you're from, or the employees, your employable... Eighty percent of our employees go outside the county to work. I don't want my family to have to leave the county and go find a place to work. I would love for them to be able to work right here. The industry is saying, "Stop." I'm sorry. I'm learning so much about what's going on, but I just, I've got a lot to say.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Buddy, the same question to you, is, "What steps would you take to bring industry into Harrelson County?"
Well, I agree with some, or most of what they're saying. I guess the biggest thing, first of all, I apologize if I offend anybody, but if you elect me, then I'm gonna make some decisions that are probably gonna offend some people, because I care what's best for everybody. We need industry here, we've got to have industry here, no matter what it takes. We got to have infrastructure to support that, we gotta have water, we gotta have sewer, we gotta have internet. Internet's not impossible to get in Harrelson County, that's a gentleman who's rented his cell TV tonight.
That's right, it's good, too.
We spent a lot of money on trying to get internet here. We passed around some money, and we still don't have it, we're working towards it, but again, you can have internet tomorrow if you want it. Talk to Matt, he'll give you his name. A lake, we can build that lake. I mean, our President Trump just got rid of how many regulations with EPA? Let's try again. We don't know if we can do it. We bought that land, I know the development authority kind of did the research to find out about the muscle, it wasn't there then. It may not be there now. Let's look again. There's now that issue, now we own the land. Sewage, that's easy to do, Waco's upgrading theirs, Buchanan just upgraded theirs. Bremen, I'm sure they got plenty. If not, they got plenty of land, let's add more. We can do it, we just have to do it. I agree with Seth on the fact, no, no doesn't mean anything, I get told no all the time. I work in industries every day, that's my job, to sell them, to sell to them and do work for them. They're gonna tell you no, but you go find another one, that's what I do every day. So, there again, if I offend you, I'm sorry, but if you elect me, I'm gonna offend somebody who can't make everybody happy. My decision's gonna benefit the majority, I promise you that.
Thank you. So, the next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Shell, and that is, "What skills, vision, expertise can you bring to the county commission?"
My name's Griffin, by the way.
Griffin, oh, God.
Okay, it was getting way too serious. What skills? I'm seventy-five years old. I don't know if you call the school of hard knocks, of life, wisdom, or nonsense. I do. People's skills, that's all I've ever done, all my life, is deal with the public. You grin and bear it, if they step on your toes, that you do what's right. What skills, negotiation, I've heard, good negotiating. That's a good skill, sir, very good skill. Try to sell a Ugo to a white collar worker at Southwater. That's been done. Am I the best? By no means. But I also agree with Brother Buddy, don't take no. Like Brother Harden said, it's just another opportunity. If this door shuts, that doesn't mean that's the only door that we have to go through. If we miss this opportunity, let's open up another opportunity, let's search out other ways. Let's not be so close-minded that it's my way or no way. I have found through my life, that'll get you no, not anywhere. You're through. Skills, working with people, working together.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Harden, the same question to you, "What skills, vision, expertise can you bring to the county commission?"
Well, the way I look at it for myself, as I stated earlier in my opening remarks, I've served this community for a while, but before that, I feel like there's a lot of things in my life that's... Sorry. My time would be spent crying, because I love what I do, I love serving the people. From the time I graduated high school at the age of twenty, I was on a two-year mission for my church, I paid for it. I served for two years. By the time I was out six months, I'd become a trainer. By the time I'd been out a year, I was called a district leader, I had a form of missionaries I was responsible for. By the time I'd been out fourteen months, I was a zone leader, which meant I had more people I had to take care of. I've served, but when I got home, by the time I was put right back in service, by the time I was twenty-seven, I was serving as a counselor in bishoprics and branch presidencies to where I was over congregations and helping those people with their needs and their concerns for the last ten years. Those are things that I do, not by paying, I do it to serve. I currently serve on a committee right now to where we're taking care of the whole Northwest region. For all of the youth, I have this big, grand activity over at Georgia Tech. Those are things that, myself, along with my wife, that we plan, that we take care of right now. All of these things that I tell you about that I do, I continue to do because I love the people. I love this county, I love what it brings to me, and the only thing I can do is give back. I currently serve on the governance team at Buchanan Elementary School. We're working right now with administrators and business owners to try to make what we're trying to accomplish something grand for not just Buchanan Elementary School, but for the city of Buchanan and for the community to have. So, I have the skills, I have what it takes to be successful and to help the other commissioners all learn to work together to become one and to become unified. And that's what I promise to give you as if I serve as Commissioner District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Griffin, the same question, "What skills, vision, expertise can you bring to the county commission?"
I'm glad you said vision. Because Isley, this county, overcoming the issues that we got right now. I say, we've got a culture problem. With as many people as we got going out of the county, I'm told that the employable people that we got left here in the county are not employable. So, why is that? For some reason, I think apparently drugs is a big issue, and people don't wanna work. So, we've got to change the community in that regard. And to do that, the vision I see is community leaders, is the commissioners being on the table, seeing unity among the commissioners, working toward the benefit of the county. Not just the commissioners, but involving the school, involving the Chamber of Commerce, involving all the businesses in the area that will get involved and coming together and working with one message. And that's to preach to our youth, 'cause we gotta start young, or no wonder we're gonna lose them if we don't. We've got to raise them up with hope for the future. We've got to give them something to go out and look forward to and becoming a productive member of a society. So, that's a vision that I really see in this community, but it's gonna take a... Is it idealistic? Sure it is, but hey, I'm not idealistic. So, it will take everybody getting involved to do that and to put that together. I've been involved in different groups, I've been involved in church groups. I was chairman of the Deacons, the largest church in Macon, Georgia. So, there's some things that I know that I've seen work in the past that we can do that will bring people together, that will get them working on the same page. I know the Harrelson County School is doing things now that is gonna benefit... students going into the industry, doing some technical areas in that regard. Uh, and so, and, and actually, there's three students from Bremen that have been going to Harrison County to take advantage of that. So, that's a great start. We're, we're moving in the right direction and I see that Jerry Bell is doing a really good job in that and's got experience in that regard. And, uh, so involving him with, uh, all the leaders that we've got, uh, some of the, uh, I've talked to, uh, the Honda leadership there, they want, they wanna start identifying students in middle school that have technical abilities, that we begin to work with them and to, uh, teach them and bring them along and encourage them to get involved from an early age, so they'll be employable when they get out. And that's, that's what I see in this community, everybody working together so you can move in one direction and, uh...
Thank you. All right, Mr. Buddy, the same question. What skills, vision, or expertise can you bring to the county commission?
Well, I, I think it's fair to say that I don't quit. I'm, I'm here a third time, uh, asking for your support. Um, so I, I can promise you that, I'm not gonna quit on you. I'm not scared of anything. See, I mean, I used to and I still would run into a burned building, I don't know how much, how much more not scared you can be. Um, I'm raising kids. I don't know how much more not scared you can be. But I have a servant's heart. That's, that's the best thing to tell you about, about me, I have a servant's heart. Again, I don't, it doesn't matter who you are, I have a servant's heart. If you have a need, I'm gonna help you. I still sleep with a radio just under my bed for the fire department and every now and then, I, I still get up in the middle of the night and I go help them boys. If it's toting Gatorade, if it's rolling hoes, they don't let me have the fun of actually putting the wet stuff on red stuff anymore, but, um, I, I still love to serve and I still love to help people. And that's the best thing I can tell you. I don't, I don't have any fancy degrees or, you know, any titles behind my name, but, but you, you're gonna get what you see and, and I promise you, I'll be there to serve you, no matter when it is, no matter what.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Witcher, the same question for you is what skills, vision, and expertise can you bring to the county commission?
Well, to answer your question, sir, I would hope, I've been in business, uh, had my own business for thirty-two years, I would hope to be able to bring a little bit of management ability, a little bit of financial ability or accounting ability, whatever you wanna call it. Had a little bit of legal experience the last forty years, so I know a little bit about the law. I think I would be able to utilize those tools to help to manage all the county's money a little bit better, to see whether or not we could spend our money a little bit more wisely and efficiently than we have been. I think that we would be able to unify the board with those skills rather than having the discord we've had for the last few months. I think we could utilize all of those, basically, we've negotiated with insurance companies and workers' comp cases, insurance companies, uh, the Social Security Administration, the federal government, even the state government, to try to negotiate through some difficult situations in those forty years. And I think that, you know, if I was allowed to utilize those skills, that we would be able to move forward, uh, allow the commissioner or chairperson to, um, not have to do the day-to-day burdens that the, the, these men's shouldered with in order to go to Atlanta to meet with the DOT and the governor to see if we could get some state grants and some other things in order to help us with some of the infrastructure that we've been talking about. I hope that, uh, I would be able to utilize that for the benefit of Harrison County in order to promote it so it will grow.
Thank you guys very much. So we'll move on to the next question and, and Mr. Harden will start with you. So would you support state, local and state legislation to make the chairman a fifth district commissioner and hire a county manager?
Great question. I've never thought about it. So can you give you an honest answer? I don't know. I would have to look at, um, everything that it entails and know from top to bottom how it would work before I can make an honest decision. Fair enough. That's my answer.
All right. Mr. Griffith, we're gonna take that same question to you. Would you support local and state legislation to make the chairman a fifth district commissioner and then hire a county manager?
I actually have thought about that. And, uh, uh, I, I would support, uh, I, I'm in favor of multiple commissioners and, uh, am very much in favor of, uh, hiring a county administrator, manager that looks after day-to-day business. That, that I would be very much in for. Not always are we able to elect somebody that's, that's gonna be well-versed in, uh, that kind of management, uh, that size budget, that many employees. What are we, fifteen, eighteen million dollar, uh, budget annually and two hundred and fifty, sixty employees with twenty-one departments? Uh, just electing somebody from the county that's running is not always the best way to put the best man in that management position. He may be with the other commissioners in the best place to oversee and, um, look after what's in the best interest of the county, while we have a manager that is trained and educated to look after the business of the county. So that would be my position in, uh, in that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Buddy, the same question to you. Would you support local and state legislation to make the chairman a fifth district commissioner and hire a county manager?
Absolutely. So long as that legislation is, is written to where you get to vote on it, um, I would never, ever want to stand in the way of, of getting a vote on, on anything. They should absolutely have a choice. Uh, five district commissioners and, and a county manager that would work directly for the board of commissioners at the will of the board of commissioners is a fantastic idea, in my opinion. It, 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 it takes away, it puts so much accountability on that individual and it's just a great idea. I mean, I, I've thought about it, I've talked to a bunch of people about it. Some people are against it, some people aren't. It might hurt me supporting it publicly, but, but I would, as long as you get to choose if, if you want that or not. I would.
Mr. Witcher, same question.
That, that question has come up a number of times out in circulating with the voters. Um, the present town, what we understand, I think the county can actually hire a county administrator to assist in the department overhead. The distinction between a county manager is that that has to be a five O board approval in order to get to the legislature of the state, in order to put it on a ballot for the people to vote on. I would not wanna place an undue burden on the taxpayers at this point because I don't think we actually know what a county administrator or a county manager would cost. I think that we need to evaluate that and see whether or not we can do it within our budgetary ranges right now. If we can, it would be a great idea. As I said a minute ago, the county chairperson, I think we need a county chairperson. I think he needs to be elected. I think the board needs to have a head. If we can get a county administrator or a county manager, whatever the people decide, then that will free up our county chairperson, chairman, whatever you'll call it, to actually go to Atlanta and lobby for some stuff for Harrison County, for roads, for water, for education, for internet, for anything about the infrastructure. So I would, uh, say that I'm inherently against doing away with the county chairperson's job, but I would probably think that we needed to put it to a vote for the county, for the voters, to see whether or not we needed a county manager or a county administrator. It would depend on whether or not it would cost and will it reach within the confines of our budget to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Shell, the same question to you.
Would you please ask the question?
Absolutely. So would you support, uh, local and state legislation to make the chairman a fifth district commissioner and hire a county manager?
If it was put on a ballot in the third district, fourth district, fifth district, sixth district, everybody was for it, fine. But we're gonna find the money to pay them. Maybe. I'm not against it. I'm not for it. I'm like this, we have department heads, that it's their responsibility to do their job, to keep their departments within budget. We have a board of commissioners to oversee those department heads. Voters, what do y'all want? Whatever you want, I'll back. But is it best for this county?
Thank you guys. It looks like we've saved all the softball questions for another time because here comes another one and it's gonna go to Mr. Griffith. We're gonna start with you. Um, what are your thoughts on building a new courthouse in county administrative building?
Since I decided to run, I have met with a lot of people. I met with a lot of individuals, I met with school superintendents, I met with business leaders, commissioners, talked to just a lot of different individuals, and nobody anywhere has brought up anything about a new county courthouse. Uh, 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 somebody said they weren't prepared to talk about that. I'm totally ignorant to a new county courthouse at this point. So I, if, if that's something that's ahead of all y'all's list, and I got to apologize because that's something I have not got up to snuff on right here. I have been going around the county and I have had, I, I've had a fire hose like hit me in the face amount of information and trying to, trying to get it, but that has, that has not been one of the issues that, uh, has, uh, come to my mind at all in that regard. So, uh, from, from that position, I, I'm just gonna have to say, I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to respond to that, so...
Good, thank you. Mr. Buddy, same question. What are your thoughts on a new courthouse in county administrative building?
So I grew up with a great understanding of, of wants and needs. Um, I'm certain the, the people, the individuals that work at the courthouse on a everyday basis, it's a need. So fairness to them, I don't know that it's, you know, it might be a want to some need, but I want to meet their needs. Um, am I in favor of just going out and spending the money? No, we can't. We just can't. I also understand that you can't do it, right? So if it's a need, then we need to find a way to fund it. Um, we need, when there's grants, then we explore all those options. If not, then we start putting money back now so we can build it sooner than later. But I'm, I'm certainly not against building a new courthouse. I'm not at all against it, but, but again, I, if it's a want or a need, you just gotta figure out how, which one it is and how far in between it is.
Thank you. Mr. Witcher?
Yes, sir. Um, again, in, in my exploration around the county during this time, I have heard that there are plans that have been looked at by the county to build a new courthouse complex that's supposedly gonna cost around eighty million dollars. I honestly don't believe that we're in a position to afford that right now. Uh, you know, the people would need to decide through a referendum if it's put on a ballot, whether or not they wanna fund the county courthouse over the next thirty, forty, fifty years. But right now, I don't believe that the taxpayer, that is a property owner and a taxpayer, I just don't believe we have the money to do it until we figure out how to cut some spending and better manage our money. I have had discussions with some of the people in the county that are in the administrative part of the government before about the courthouse we have now. It needs some repair, there's no doubt about it. They're out of space. But to go out to and buy a separate piece of land and put up an eighty million dollar complex and put a tax burden on the people, I just don't think that we're ready or needed at this point. I have mentioned to some of the administrative officials in the past years that we have a perfect place to expand our courthouse now. You notice we have a shelf above the courthouse for parking and we have two sides where you come in with employees, part of the public park. And, well, how are we gonna fix the parking, Mr. Witcher? Look at what Carroll County did down next to their courthouse. They used the parking, uh, they built a parking deck about four or five stories right adjacent to the courthouse. You have access on each side of the courthouse from one-twenty where you could put up a three or four-story, um, parking deck, or the parking, and accommodate the traffic for jury trials and other management that is needed. But right now, I think we need to worry about fixing our courthouse, maybe expanding it a little and look into the future before we wanna spend that kind of money on behalf of the taxpayer. And I think the taxpayer needs to ultimately decide that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, the question was, what are your thoughts on a new courthouse and a county administrative office?
Not at this time, and I would say not in the near future. Near future being five, ten, possibly fifteen years. I'm aware of the need for space at the courthouse, and now there I am over the years, a lot. I've seen files that got soaked because of the leak in river. We have problems, people, at that courthouse. Major problems. If you've got a broke leg, go put a Band-Aid on it. Or if you got a sprained ankle, wrap it up. You following me? Let's fix what we've got for now.
And Mr. Harden, the question to you is what are your thoughts on building a new courthouse in county administrative office?
Um, mine is like anything that you do. You've got to understand everything about it before you can make a decision. I agree that we have to, we don't have the money to do it, right? I don't, my taxes, they increased a lot last year, I don't need them to continue to increase. I think there's ways that you can refurbish something. A lot of times we buy refurbished TVs or something like that, but we can't afford a new one. Um, so there's ways that we can look at it, um, but for me to sit here and say, this is what we gotta do, here's how it's gotta be done, until you look at the entire blueprint of what needs to take place, um, I cannot tell you that's what we're going to do, but I do agree that the people have to vote to say, this is what we want, here's why we want it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Buddy, the next question will go with you. It's about, about working with the commissioners. How will you compromise when there are disagreements among the commissioners on important topics?
So I've been, I've been going to these commission meetings for about ten years. I've got a great relationship, I would say, with, with everybody that sits up there. Me and, me and Mr. Vines, we're kinda got to know each other a little bit last year and, and, and we, we got a pretty good relationship, but I know the other ones very well. Um, I got no issue with any of them, and I, I feel very confident that I can go up there and work alongside them. Now, disagreement is way different than arguing. I mean, it is. I'm not interested and will absolutely not go up there and embarrass you and, and argue and, and make us look like fools at the face of working on you. I'm not, I'm not, just not gonna do it. But I can go up there and cohesively work with the ladies and gentlemen that work up there now, feel confident in it. I've talked to them all on a regular basis, have for a long time, they'll tell you that. They call me, I answer their call. I call them, they answer my call. I mean, and, and that's what we continue to do.
Mr. Witcher?
I'm like Mr. Griffith, boy, that is a tough question because how would you deal with it if it's not what you wanna do? First of all, I think that, I think the proper word is vetted, but I think that each thing that the board does needs to be properly looked at to make sure we get the best bang for the buck before we start voting on it. If it's not properly investigated and looked at to see whether or not it's economically feasible based on the money we got, then I would probably vote no against it. You know, it's, it's called negotiation. We have to negotiate with each other in order to try to make it a unified board. We all have to be in agreement to get it done, but if you overcome what we've had in the past, we, we've gotta do the negotiation and there will be some compromise. Specifically what I do at the moment, if it was thrown at me, I would have to argue that it's not properly vetted by the board, that we're not in a position to make a decision on it, and I would move to table it until such time as we can move forward with an economic feasibility study to see whether or not it's what we need to do. I would also encourage our voters in all of the districts to come to the monthly meeting and also the work planning session because we need to know what y'all want. We need to, y'all to address us if I'm fortunate enough to be elected and let us know what y'all's concerns are. That way we can look at them as a board and we can make decisions and we can see if we can afford it and see if we can make, uh, be economically feasible on the budget we have and then we'll try to put it in place. Unless it's probably, unless we look at our money, how we spend it and we make sure we get the best deal, I would probably say we would be locked and have to compromise until we can go further with it.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, the question was how will you compromise when there are disagreements among the commissioners on important topics?
Important topics?
If I may use this example out of the Bible. Very rarely did the twelve disciples agree on everything. But they served as common goal. I may disagree in my thinking with another commissioner. That doesn't mean I have to be a horse's petoot about it. First of all, James Shell is gonna pray about it. Compromise? Sure. I'm not so proud that I won't stand and say, I'm never wrong. Show me where I'm wrong. I'll get on your side and be good. Have we looked at every aspect of whatever subject we're talking about? Whatever rule that we're thinking about making. Are we governing ourselves according to what the taxpayers of our district has told us to do? That's my answer.
Mr. Harden, the question was, how will you compromise when there are disagreements among the commissioners on important topics?
Attorney Witcher said he would like for the people to be there. In order for people to be there, it has to be at a time where people can get there. Most of us are working Americans. We're not able to be there in the morning. So it must have changed the time recently that I'm not aware of. First of all, I would like for you to be there. Second thing is, is this, these guys right here including myself and the other guys that are already serving. This is a servant role. So the number one thing for me is to always let those guys and ladies understand that we're serving the community. It's about you, it's about me, okay? It's not about my personal agenda, what I'm taking to the board to say, this is what I gotta get done. When you care about the people that you live around, you live with and that you love, you serve those people and you do it to the best of your ability. So with me, I'm not gonna be pushed one way or the other. I'm going to look at it as I told you from the very beginning. I'll always be honest, very transparent in all my decisions and never compromise my values. I will always do those three things to help you know that you're getting the best bang for your buck, right? So I'll be able to work with these people and help them understand that's not how we act. This is how we have to handle ourselves in order to be great representatives for this county.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, the question to you is, how would you compromise when there are disagreements among the commissioners on important topics?
First of all, I'm a problem solver. That's kind of what I do for a living. And I manage timberland and I go in and I visit with people and they either don't wanna cut, they do wanna cut, and I help them come up with alternative options for managing their timber that meets all their needs. I have a software company and we do, we do software that solves problems for the timber industry. And we go in and look at what their issues are, what their problems are, and we try to find ways to make it work for them without changing what they do. They're used to doing things a certain way and we help them find ways to do that. Sometimes maybe it's a problem of maybe there's not enough information presented to the board. That could be part of the issue that folks are having problems with. It may be that there needs to be more information brought to the table in order to discuss it knowledgeably. And I would say that there's nothing wrong with a little spirited discussion. Emotion is a good thing. And we need to believe what we stand on. But at the same time, we don't need to be so arrogant that I think that I have all the answers to what's going on and that I can't give and take in the process of what's going on here. I mean, I read the paper too and I've actually heard that some industries have read our paper and said, take our name off the list, it's coming to Harrison County. There's contender for Harrison County. So I'm a uniter and I wanna see not only within that board, but I wanna see leaders in the entire county unite in that regard. So if, if the community is involved, it's more than just commissioners there. So we've got input from you guys, we've got input from industry and we've got input from the schools and we go to those meetings educated and we have the knowledge that we know what's gonna benefit the county. Then maybe we got a better opportunity to put together some kind of solution that's gonna benefit everybody and everybody can agree on.
Thank you. All right, here's that softball question you guys have been looking for all night. Mr. Witcher, we're gonna go back to you. If given a magic wand, what changes would you make in the first ninety days?
Can I answer that in one word? Call unification. Bring harmony back to it. Just do away with all the discord. And that's a tough question because it's a short time period, don't know what we can do. We first have to agree that we can agree. But work for unification of the board, try to get us a better reputation in the state, style of the paper. Look at what we've got coming up, discuss it, vet it with the, you know, is this the best deal we can get for the money? Try to avoid any increase in taxes, but short term, that would really be a hard question to answer. But unification is my basic answer. Thank you.
Mr. Shell, the question is, if given a magic wand, what changes would you make in the first ninety days?
When you can't improve on perfection, you live it alone.
All right. Mr. Harden, same question to you. Magic wand in ninety days. What changes would you make in ninety days if given a magic wand?
Unification. I think everybody sees that. I think that's something we have to do and that's what I work on.
Mr. Griffith, this question to you is, if given a magic wand, what changes would you make in the first ninety days?
I'm gonna continue to do what I have done for the last three weeks is to go and meet with leaders in this community. I wanna, I wanna get inside the schools. I wanna see what they're doing specifically so I can help relate. I talk to different individuals and they don't seem to know what other leaders in the community are doing. So apparently it's gonna take somebody facilitating that to get everybody on the same page. So I wanna involve people in all areas. And to do that, I'm gonna have to visit with them. We're all gonna have to visit with them. We're all gonna have to come up with a common goal. And that goal, you know, we're all gonna have to preach that same message. And that, Harrison County can be great. It's got everything that we need from the highways to the people. But we've got to change the culture of this community. We gotta become a culture of unity. I mean, they're saying it, but that's it. But that don't just happen. You got to, you got to get out and bring these people together. You got to bring Raymond in Harrison County to a table and so they can start talking. You got to bring the chamber into the schools and the schools in with the businesses. Steve Ward was saying, I wanna identify these students. I wanna see who they are. So that's, that's my goal is to get in and begin to participate to see these things happen. Not just talk about unity, but begin to bring these people together. And as they work together, that unity's gonna come. As Raymond sees, some of their students are more geared toward technology and some technical career, then maybe we can share some classrooms and schools and do some things together and we can figure out how to do a common budget to make that work. So we, again, it's unity, but it's going out and meeting with every one of these people. It's meeting with the leaders in all these industries. You know, people that employ other people and finding out why that after four days, one out of ten is left. Why when you hire five, none of them ever show up to go to work? That's a problem with bringing in industry which is gonna offset the tax base for our property owners. So we got to get together in some form and fashion, everybody on the same page, everybody with the same message. When people come in, they need to see our students because we're proud of what we're doing in our schools. If we're not, then we need to get involved and make sure why we're not proud, it gets corrected and it gets straightened out. If our leaders are not doing what they need to be doing, then we need to not vote for them next time and vote for somebody else that's coming in.
Mr. Buddy, if given a magic wand, what changes would you make in the first ninety days?
If you're gonna ask me a fun question, I'm gonna answer it. So the first thing is, school taxes for seniors are gone. We're not doing that. Fixing every road we got. Everybody's got internet. We're building a lake. Increasing employee salary and benefits so they don't, the turnover rate stops and we got great quality employees that we don't need to go anywhere else. And I guess when I get done doing that, I gotta fill industrial parks with industry. So all the changes I just made will last after my wand expires, so.
Awesome.
That's magic wand.
All right, Mr. Shell, we're gonna go to you with this question. Starting off is, would you consider changing the current commission meeting time to accommodate citizens who work during the day?
Sir, it were up to me all. We're here to serve you. Where do you need us?
Mr. Harden?
Absolutely. I said that earlier. That time is if we wanna be for the people. If I'm sitting somewhere and I'm on a board and we're doing great things for this community, guess what I want? I want the people there. Because after the meeting, I wanna be able to shake their hand and say, thank you for what you do. So yes, I would absolutely. And I understand you got four of the people you have to work with and, but that's one of the common goals. That's where unity comes into play. Are we in it for the people? Are we in it for ourselves and our personal interests? I'm not. I'm in it for what is needed for our community. So yes, the time would need to be changed.
Mr. Griffith, would you consider changing the current commission meeting time to accommodate citizens who work during the day?
My politically correct answer would be sure, let's change it. I would have a caveat on that and say, if we don't have participation, then commissioners probably have a lie too and whatnot. So that's, I don't mean that in nigg. I mean that in a perspective of if we do that, then we want you involved. But I think most of the involvement should come upfront. It should come over the issues that we know what's going on. And that's probably coming from publication of what's going on. It's probably coming from good minutes that are distributed as to what went on in the last meeting and what we're covering in the next meeting. So if you, if you wanna be involved, you can be, actually you can be involved now. I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against doing it at night. I'm just saying that you can be involved one way or the other. Either way, you need to be involved in what's going on. And if it takes changing it tonight, then hey, I work at night anyway, so it doesn't matter. I work all hour. My wife can tell you that I'm always doing something in that regard. So I'm doing what happened at night, but the whole key, my whole message here tonight, I hope you've heard it, is involvement in the community. And whether you're an individual that gets up and goes to work in the morning or you own a big business or, hey, you may drive out of town and work somewhere else. So you should have an interest in what's going on. So maybe you can get something that brings you closer into home so you don't have to leave and travel so far. My point is, you need to be involved in what's going on. And whether you're there at night or whether you're there in the day, you need to be, you need to know who your commissioner is and you need to have a relationship with that person. I was in the Capitol this last week and one of the senators was saying, you need to get to know your senators. He said, I had eight people come in my office, wanna talk to me about a particular issue. He said, one of them I knew. And I went out to see him and invited him into my office to hear what he had to say. They were all talking about the same thing, but none of them had made an effort to find out or to meet him or to talk to him or to get to know him or ask him anything about what was going on until there was a problem and then they wanted his attention. And he was saying that get to know your representatives. So you need to get to know your commissioner because he does work for you. And he needs to know where your interest is and where these things are. So I don't care if it's night or day as long as you're involved.
Mr. Buddy, would you consider changing the current commission meeting time to accommodate citizens who work during the day?
Absolutely. I mean, I'd consider anything. And like I said, I've been going to the commission meetings for a long time. And I remember when they were all at night. I remember when they changed it. Most of the balance of the people that came either way, no matter what the time is or some of the senior citizens and with that respect is why I believe it is in the mornings is the driving back at night. So we gotta have some consideration to that. But nevertheless, I mean, the question was, would I consider? I would consider. I'm not, I'm not against it. But it is balanced in the half a year. It's in, it's in the morning, half a year it's in the evening. But if you elect me, you're gonna know what's going on anyway. I'm gonna host quarterly town hall meetings that if you got an issue, bring it to me and I'll represent you if you can't make it to the meeting. And along with, with the meetings, I do intend to change the way that you can address the board. I don't agree with the fact that you gotta pretty much get pre-approved with an issue the Friday before, before you can address the board on Tuesday. If your issue doesn't arise till Monday evening and you don't get in contact with your district representative, you really don't have a leg to stand on at the Tuesday meeting. I directly intend to change that because you should be able to walk in the door and let's talk about it. And if I gotta bring a lunch and everybody else gotta bring a lunch and we'll stay for four or five hours, whatever it takes. But yes, I would consider.
Mr. Witcher?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I would consider cha, excuse me, I would consider changing the meetings to accommodate the voters. That's a simple answer. Like he said, we have a six o'clock meeting, work session in the evening, and then a ten o'clock meeting and daylight savings times versus daylight time. If we, we need to do whatever we need to do to accommodate the voters. Hey, Mr. Buddy said he was gonna have town hall meetings. If I'm elected, I plan on creating a website for people to be able to email me with their issues or a cell phone for them to be able to text me so we'll know what the issues are before they get there because people have lives and they're not always able to attend the meetings. But I'd like to be able to know what their issues are before we get there so we can bring them before the board and so we can discuss them. And yes, we'll do whatever we need to do to accommodate the voters. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harden, this question's gonna go to you. Is that your thoughts on an expanded transportation system to serve the whole community?
Really? Don't always start with a hard one.
I do get a hard one. I know absolutely nothing about it. So I, I don't know. I'd have to look and see. Does it make sense or does it not? I don't know.
All right.
I just get a hard one to start with.
Mr. Griffith, that question to you is, your thoughts on an expanded transportation system that serves the whole community?
Big yeah. That's kinda like the courthouse question. Transportation expanded to serve the whole community. You know, my first thought about knowing the issues would be to say, no. But I don't know the issues on that. I'm not sure who or why or what kind of transportation we've got now and what we need to expand to it. Again, I've been looking at a lot of issues since I decided to run. That just doesn't happen to be one of them. I've had some other issues that I felt like it would be a whole lot more serious looking at than I'm assuming a limited number of county residents. But again, that's assumption. I may just not run that stuff into a whole. But again, that's assumption, and I may just not run that stuff into a whole before I, I know what I'm saying here, uh, on transportation. So, uh, right now, at the moment, on the concerns that I have been out and found talking to you guys, that there are a lot more important issues on the table than there are expanding the transportation, uh, across the county at this point in time. Now, that just may affect elderly, I'm not aware of, and I don't know how big that, uh, issue is, and how many people are getting left out because of that, but I would certainly be willing to hear it, but at, at this point in time, I'm really not prepared to answer that, but I am prepared to say that, uh, I know there are a lot of important issues out there that certainly deserve time and deserve our effort and deserve our money in looking into that, uh, that I have looked at, and that are, are very important to the future of this community, and, uh, bringing in the growth that we need to have in order to develop what we need to, uh, keep our people here at work, and to grow our, uh, tax base to relieve some of the tax burden from our property owners.
Mr. Buddy, the thought was, uh, your thoughts on expanded transportation system to serve the whole community?
I can't believe your board got that one by as vague as it is. If you're talking about more than that, not at all. Um, if you're talking about the buses that transport our seniors and stuff, I mean, I, from my understanding, they do a good job, and, and there's not a, a need and a great expansion on that. But other than that, if you need a ride, call me, I'll come get you, take you right there. This is as honest as I can be.
Mr. Witcher, your thoughts on expanded transportation system?
Well, as Mr. Buddy said, we currently have a transportation system in place, and we have had for a number of years, it's been managed by the board. They take seniors and people that need medical treatment to various places, to hospitals, to therapy, wherever they need to go, even the pharmacy I understand. And I have been told they even take you to the grocery store if you need to go. First question I would ask is, what would it cost to expand? If it's gonna cost a bunch of money to add employees or bus drivers, or, I mean, whatever you call them, DOT licensed people, and have to buy new buses, we'd have to look at it from a budgetary standpoint. Can we literally afford it without raising our taxes? I don't think we can right now, I'm not opposed to it, but we'd have to say, as I did a while ago, we'd have to properly vet it before we voted on whether or not we could expand it. If it's gonna cause an increase in the taxpayers' property tax, I would have to say no at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Shell, your thoughts on a expanded transportation system to serve the whole community?
This may come back and bite me, but I think at this time, that issue has been addressed. And addressed what? Between the problems that I'm aware of, and what the county does, and problems I'm aware of that the churches do, even in delivering meals. I would say, whoever submitted that question, if they know of someone in need, simply let us know. There are plenty of groups out here willing and waiting to help. Take to adopt them, bring them soon, even the CCC and Talos. Just let us know.
All right. So it's winding down, but they're, they're getting, they're gonna get even harder, it looks like, so, um, and parrot her for you guys. And this one will go to Mr., Mr. Griffith, that says, how can you relieve the tax burden on seniors?
I think I mentioned earlier that, uh, everybody wants reduced taxes from what we're paying right now. Nobody wants to give up services that they are receiving. And I fully understand the issue, and I know some other counties, uh, do not have taxes on seniors at certain levels. Right now, from my perspective, the best way to reduce the tax burden on the entire tax base is to, uh, increase the, uh, increase the tax base by bringing in industry. You bring in industry, the right kinda industry, and then you generate more tax income, which gives you an opportunity to relieve some of the pressure and the burden on the property owners themselves. So outside, outside of bringing in tax industry and increasing that base, I don't see much way we're gonna, it, that you can, you can, uh, always go in and cut here, there, a little bit, but I don't think you're gonna be able to cut enough out of the budget to see a significant reduction in tax base to anybody, or tax cost on, on property taxes. So the best way to do it is bringing in industry, increasing that tax brace, base, and that way alleviate some of the tax burden on all of our property.
Mr. Buddy, how do we, uh, how do we relieve the tax burden on seniors?
It, it really is simple. It's, it's infrastructure and industry, and it doesn't have to be a big catatour plant starting tomorrow, it could be ten small businesses, but that's just, that's all in life. Infrastructure to support the industry, and the industry to support the tax base. That's it.
Mr. Witcher, how do we relieve the tax burden on seniors?
Unfortunately, these people are correct. There's no short-term answer to it, and I wish there were, but you have to have economic growth. If we have economic growth, you gotta have infrastructure, you gotta have water, schools, roads, as I said earlier. All four counties around us enjoy, when you return, I mean, when you hit sixty-two years old, they don't have school tax. For the short term, we don't have a choice. I'm a senior, as y'all already know, but we're gonna have to pay the school taxes in short term until we can expand our infrastructure and try to attach, I mean, try to attract industry. Once, if we can expand our tax base, and the school board and the commission board can get together, simply that they can agree on everything, and we can go to the legislature, and they can take that tax burden away from our seniors. But in short term, I don't think there is an answer to that question, even though I wish there were, because I'm a property owner and a taxpayer. Thank you.
Mr. Shell, how do we relieve the tax burden on seniors?
Well, being one myself, uh, would you please answer that for me? I'll answer that too. This is not gonna be very popular, but it's my thought. I hate taxes, just like everyone in this room does. And I also believe the only fair tax in this country is sales tax. You pay it, I pay it, man down the road pays it, lady down the road pays it. Is that an answer? That's done in other states where there isn't any property tax, period. But are we willing to pay fifteen percent sales tax on everything that we buy? Or twelve percent? Or twenty? But that's a possibility. I agree with everything these gentlemen have said. There is not a short-term solution to this problem. Probably not in my lifetime, however long that may be. But we gotta start somewhere. Industry pays big taxes. How do we get industry? Better educated workers, better skilled workers. Where does that start? These great programs you've heard about that, that the schools work with. But is this gonna help us probably in anyone's generation that's here tonight? Probably not. But let's have some realistic expectations. And it leads. Put our toe in the water and get it wet and get started. We know the way to go. Y'all know the way to go. We know what it's gonna take. We just gotta do it. Period. Let's get started.
Mr. Harden, how do we relieve the tax burden on seniors?
This is my thought that I've had for a while, um, regarding taxes. Everybody said it, you're not gonna reduce taxes. Ladies and gentlemen, I am so sorry. There are ways it can take place over the years. I don't want you to think I'm opposed to industry, but let me tell you something. A lot of these people that work in these Honda plants don't live in Harlson County. They come from outside of here. A lot of people work in those plants that live in Harlson County, but a lot of them don't. A lot of them live in other counties. So what, as I stated earlier, when somebody's looking to move, um, I mentioned a family earlier, they looked for three things. They looked for school, church, and rec. Right? So the way that you're gonna be able to generate people to come to this county is have things that are, are better, they wanna be a part of. I'm a sports fanatic, right? Y'all know who, uh, what kinda, I'm not trying to categorize people in any way, so it's gonna take this way. People that have money play tennis. It's a fact, okay? You see tennis courts all over the place. We don't have tennis courts anywhere here. If we start to develop things that are more than football, basketball, baseball, for people to wanna move into our county, then people start to live here. They pay taxes. We offer things for them to be able to do. That's how you can start over time lowering taxes. If they go off somewhere else and work, that's fine. If they're working, if they're living here, they're continuing to pay those taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Buddy, the final question for the evening's gonna be, uh, it'll go to you to start. What are your thoughts on cleaning up drug-infested areas? And then instead of parentheses, motels, etc.
Uh, can we start tomorrow? Cleaning them up. Hey, it's in your hands. Sheriff's election's coming up. You got an awesome magistrate judge, in my opinion, that'll back them. Sheriff's election, election is coming up. If it's, if it's any, any kind of referendum or anything that, that I can take part in doing on the board of commissioners to clean up the dilapidated building, enforce the law we already have on, on structures like that, let's tear them down, put them in the dumpster. I'm not for it. The county shouldn't be in the real estate business, so I'm not for, you know, taking the property. But we can lean it, we can bind them, we can, I mean, stop talking about it, let's do it. That's the best answer I got.
Mr. Witcher, did you repeat your question, Wes? What are your thoughts on cleaning up drug-infested areas?
They would definitely need to be cleaned up. I worked with the drug task force in this community for over twenty-five years in my practice, and they, they do a wonderful job. They get lots of calls about, Joe Blow over here selling drugs, Dem Bob over there selling drugs, and people complain constantly about, nobody will go do anything about it. Their primary concern is they don't have the resources to go do anything about it. What they're trying to do is go up the chain and get, it's like the hub of the, or the center of the wheel, try to get the hub. That way you cut out the supply that's coming to these places. Of course, they need to go arrest the people that are selling drugs. They need to get rid of the infestation and do away with the places they, they inhabit. But in the short term, you don't have the resources to do every time you get a drug call to go arrest somebody that over on Wishmail Road, Max Witcher's over on Wishmail Road selling drugs. They don't wanna get him because they want, where Max Witcher's getting his drug supply if I was a tick. So they have done a wonderful job at it over the time I've been practicing. But, um, it's a, it's more than just a short-term problem, it's a long-term problem. You've heard the national news about we're on an opioid epidemic, and Congress is trying to do something about it. So it's just not in Harlson County, Georgia, Carroll County, Georgia, any of the surrounding counties. It's all over the United States. I read a book not long ago, um, I think his name is David Valdaci, and talked about the fallen, it was in the community in the Midwest, and they had the biggest opioid epidemic that they could, and the DEA and the local authorities, and everybody was working on it, but they couldn't do anything about it. But if they can cut out the supply, they gonna break that chain of being able to distribute it to the people that are down on the street selling it, and that's the main goal, is try to eliminate the supplier. And hopefully in the long run, we can clean up all of the infested areas and do away with they don't have any place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, the question to you is, what are your thoughts on cleaning up drug-infested areas?
It begins with a cultural change. Can I explain that? With all of us here. Oh, I'm just a person, what can I do? You might be surprised what you can do. I'm not gonna blow my own horn here, 'cause I have nothing to do with this. And I don't care if every one of you knows where I live, but it's Dubdemon Canoe Trail Number Two, Apotra Springs Road. There's a bridge called Old Mi-, uh, Old Mi's Bridge. For the twenty-two years, come May, will be twenty-three, that I have lived there. The county owns the roadway to the bridge, and also, of course, the roadway of Apotra Springs Bridge, the cement bridge. But there's approximately fifty yards in between that had grown up, beyond belief. I have walked down there, my property joins this, many, many, many times, and caught drug bills being done. I called 911. They're gone before the sheriff deputies have time to get there. Did you get your tag number? Blah, 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 blah. Long story short, that's not cleaned. Not only does the sheriff's department patrol that road, and they have, they have been. They had to have pulled down in there to been able to see the car. Now they can just drive by. Bingo, there they are. It was December, don't ask me the date, I don't remember. I do remember. It was cold, and it was raining, and there was a car this way and this way. At Dusky Dark. Backed up to the canoe launch, landing area. What are they doing, playing Monopoly? It's a non-drug area. I said that to say this. No one knows your community or your neighborhood as well as you do. You know, if it looks out of place, tell somebody. It starts with us. We got to stop it. And then it goes to the district attorney, then it goes before the judge. Well, the judge says, our prisons are full. They are. Where we gonna put them? They all know. So it's not the judge's fault. It's not the sheriff's department's fault, it's not the DEA's fault. I'm stopping. It starts, it starts with us.
Mr. Harden, the question was, what are your thoughts on cleaning up the drug-infested areas?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Shell. I, I think everything starts, a lot of times, with being an example, um, to people. When you look at, I understand, um, in, in dealing with kids that I deal with, um, through, um, service of coaches of basketball, these, these kids are around drugs all the time. But the best thing you can do is be an example to them, and explain to them the importance of why they shouldn't do it. Teachers, educators do this all the time, they become parents and examples to these kids that they don't have at home. They don't know any better. And so, we're better to look to than us. People like us in this community, they can help them. And so, we had an incident where, just this past year, we had a kid who loved the kid to death, but was called in the wrong place at the wrong time and was dismissed from our team. Now he understands, and I can guarantee you, this individual don't make the same mistake again, because he understands the importance of staying away from that kinda stuff. It starts with us, we have to be an example, help these kids understand why not to do it, and if they do, where they'll end up down the road.
Mr. Griffith, the question to you is, what are your thoughts on cleaning up the drug-infested areas?
Again, this, this goes back to my central issue, that it is, as you said, a cultural issue. And this county obviously has a drug problem. And so, it does involve you. I, I, I'm repeating basically the same thing they said, but it involves you. So our community has gotten to come together. You, you can't do it as a individual, you gonna begin to make an impact as an individual, but you got to come together with groups, and you got to reach the schools, uh, and you got to reach the workforce. It's not just the youth. We need, we need to preach that message to our youth, but a lot of times, they get it from their parents. I know parents that are doing that kinda stuff and have that kinda influence on their children, or lack of influence. or lack of influence. Uh, and so, it's a whole culture issue that we've got to change. It's gonna be a slow process. We got to come together as a whole, every individual. You think you don't have the influence, but yeah, you do. If everybody starts to do it, and everybody in leadership joins together, we go back to unity, that I know you mentioned, and I think all of you mentioned unity, unifying the message to the entire community, to the workforce, that, uh, hey, you don't get to do drugs and work in our business. So, that, they got to change. And so, uh, it starts at the top and works its way down. And we've all got to get on board of that ship and steer it in the right direction.
Thank you. Well, you guys have survived, uh, ten, uh, very difficult questions. It seems like, of course, I think Seth got started with those. So, thank you guys for being good sports with that. Before I, uh, Mr. Witcher, start with the one o'clock, or the one-minute, uh, closing, um, comments, since I'm up here, I did wanna do a couple of shameless plugs, uh, to you guys. On May the, or March the seventh, in this room, we'll have an economic development-focused breakfast, a lot of conversation on industry. Uh, and what we've done is, we have a panel of experts. We have a site selector, that's the guy who helps the companies actually pick that final location. We have a retail specialist, that is a guy who helps steer companies into markets where those retailers, mainly national brands, uh, can make the most money. Uh, and then we have a representative from Georgia Power, who does community development and leadership training. And she'll kinda talk a little bit about how it all starts with leadership. Every great thing starts with good leadership, which gets us back to these guys right here. Thank you guys, uh, for coming. The election is on March the nineteenth. So, I was, I just received, uh, news break, eleven people have early voted. So, for those of you who have not voted early yet, uh, I don't know how many of you guys voted more than once, but eleven people have early voted. You can now go start, uh, early voting at the courthouse, uh, if you can't make it on the nineteenth. And, uh, Pat, kill me if I don't tell you, the Bremond Library opens, uh, on Saturday, May the second, after some water damage there. Don't shoot me, and, uh, hopefully that'll reduce some of my library fines. All right, so what we'll do, uh, Mr. Witcher, we're gonna start with you, uh, for your one-minute closing.
Thank you, sir. Very briefly, uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. It's been my pleasure. As I told you earlier, I was born in Harlestown County, raised in Harlestown County, came back to Harlestown County, been here for the last forty years in business. I think I can bring some management skills to the board, some accounting experience or financial experience. I think I have something to offer, offer in the short term. And you can tell based on my age, I don't have a long-term political agenda or an intention to be here for a long time. But I do have some goals for the short term. Unification, road spending, road repair, a lot of different things. It's not gonna take a lot of time to explain, but I would, you couldn't ask for a better bunch of people to select from, but I would ask for your vote and support on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at your poll. Thank you.
Mr. Shell, we'll just start working in that direction.
I am James Shell. This is Mr. Griffith, by the way. Don't let the bottle reader confuse you. Thanks. Adam and I were discussing how many people to show up. Y'all exceeded my expectations. Thank you. Thank you for caring enough to share with us. Now, please care on March nineteenth and show at the polls. Show your support, who you believe in of these five guys right here. Sorry there's not a lady. Soon there will be, up here with us, Ronnie. What I desire from you personally, pray before you vote, pray, uh, vote your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. They've said to attend March nineteenth and vote, and do it early. Three things to take away from tonight about me. I'll always be honest. I'll always be very transparent in all my decisions I make. And I'll never compromise my values and who I stand for and what I represent. Thank you.
In nineteen eighty-eight, Georgia Farm Bureau hired me to come start a real estate timber division. We built that from scratch to a fifty-million-dollar company. I'm willing, I'm excited about working in the county here to try to help our community move forward in a better direction. It scares me to death as to what might be involved and how much time and effort would be involved in the process. But I'm excited about the input and feedback I, I've gotten from each one of you when I've been out and learning about what's going on in the community. And hopefully, uh, being a part of moving us to the next step to become a great county.
Ironically enough, I have eleven people in my family that love districts first. Give me the opportunity to serve you and, and hold me accountable about it.
Again, thank you guys for coming. Please, let's give each other a round of applause. You guys earned your bottle of water tonight. Thank you guys for coming.